Most of it cheats off. There is a drain here.
It clogs up in the front, ends up going out, and it's freezing on Albany Avenue.
Oh, that's when the cars are dripping when they pull out?
No, that's when the ice builds up around the building and their water keeps, comes running out, hits the ice, and then it gets clogged up and it goes all the way out on Albany Avenue. The place is a horror show in the winter.
Are you talking about this drain right here?
The front, going out.
I don't think, I don't know. I don't know what drain's not working. I just know that they aren't working. I don't know if they're not working because the water freezes on it, but...
The whole watershed is kind of off to that direction.
I think you're right.
It's the cars tracking out. The cars keep dripping, they come out, they drip.
And then they...
And then it just keeps building up and building up.
Because he is right, it is graded from the road in.
From the road down, yeah.
It doesn't run from the car wash out, it's just the traffic. That's a matter of the cars getting blown off, you know, well before they come out of the tunnel.
There are definite drainage problems on the site. You get ice built up this high around the building because it's not being drained. I mean, I go by there and I won't even go in the place because, you know, it's a disaster.
Well, all the...
This goes back a couple of years. Has it been closed the past year?
It has been closed for two years, a little over two years now.
Yeah, no, it was...
And I don't know what maintenance that, because a lot of these, especially from out here to that catch basin, and it goes basically around the property, if they're not vacuumed out or suctioned out and they are just clogged, I can't speak to the maintenance of the prior owner, occupant, operator. But one thing that we want to make...
You don't plan to change what's there now?
We want to improve what's there right now. And any drain that's not necessary or isn't working with our new model, with this express model, we'll get rid of.
Hiram, has the engineering staff looked at this?
Well, I'll tell you, do you know what the timeframe is for the other section that you're talking about?
I'm not exactly sure. I mean, I think Brian's interested in doing it next year or so.
My understanding is that the engineering firm is working on that now, and prior to the wintertime, we'll make sure that Rich Switzke touches base with the engineer so that should it become an issue that they need to address, it will be done before the wintertime. I think that's probably reasonable.
Because I do agree with Jerry, I think that sheets off 44, off down, down toward the rear of the property, something else is blocked.
Well, you get ice dams is what it amounts to.
Well, I think we need to have the applicant engineer and Rich take a look prior to the wintertime.
Do you plan on doing any topical surface, you know, re-asphalt or any coating? Because I'm thinking if there's drainage, you probably want to have that all taken care of before you put in new asphalt.
Right.
If there were any plans to do so.
Well, we're going to have to tear up some of the conduits, a lot of electronics that go underneath the surface. We were planning on having the whole surface coated, treated, or sealed, relined. Maybe eventually, if there are, you know, real problem areas that we need to change the grade of it, we can incorporate it into, you know, the longer-term plans of what, you know, the owner has.
When do you plan to open?
We're hoping sometime this summer, summer of 2013.
I also had a question on the ownership. I see a number of names here. So, the owner, the owner is the owner of the entire strip, right?
Correct.
That's Salisbury Turnpike Realty.
Correct.
And you as agent, what is your role, sir?
I'm only operating, I'll be the owner-operator of the car wash.
Oh, you will? So, you lease it or whatever? Do you have a financial arrangement that does that?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right. Who is Mr. Nasul?
He's the member of the LLC that owns the entire property. It will be managed, absolutely.
Yeah, I was going to ask that too, because I see you have a lot of automated systems that you don't really need anybody there, so there is going to be somebody there on site.
It's a mechanical operation.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
There's always going to need to be somebody there at all times, and, you know, it would be nice to be able to have it completely on the end, but that's not going to be the case.
Probably not the best idea.
Does this have the blowers at the end to blow the water out of the cars?
It does. Yeah, and the, this, all the equipment in here is probably 30 or 40 years old, very dated. Much of the new equipment that we'll be installing is much more efficient with water consumption, drying off of the cars. You're just going to get a much better, cleaner car wash. So, hopefully the water that's tracked out by a vehicle won't be a problem as much as it had been in the past if cars weren't coming out completely dry. I mean, there will be some...
Have people out there wiping the cars down?
There could be, but we're also looking at, you know, the concrete pads, having those heated so that if there is any water buildup, it can quickly get into a drain right away. And again, I can't really speak to, you know, drainage issues from the past because, you know, my understanding of the layout of how the drainage system actually works, it's like an interconnected series of drains, and if one gets clogged further down line, that could actually prevent all of the drains from draining out properly.
Why are there two pay stations and one?
And one gate. It just helps with efficiency, and when, you know, the first person to arrive will be able to, from the kiosk, pay for their wash, select the type of wash that they want, pay for the wash. When the car wash is available, their gate will open, it will close, and it will alternate to the other gate. It just allows a better flow and control of the flow of traffic on-site.
But if you look at the lanes the way that they're, it looks like you might get two cars at most in that left lane. Says, I mean, obviously you don't want cars backed up on Albany Turnpike, and I, so you want to try and improve the flow, but it doesn't look like there's much efficiency out of that first gate as, you know, you can see the clear line demarcation of the first row, but the second one doesn't. Is that drawing correct? That landscaping is going to be buffered out like that?
No, it will be, and we work pretty, pretty hard on making sure that this is a cars, a car. We actually modeled it with an F-350 long bed to be able to line up and line up straight with the building.
Yep.
By pushing it over this way, we can, we can stack a few cars right up to here without interfering with the outside lane.
Yep.
And then we can also queue cars in here as well. There'll be some cones, it won't be a curb or anything like that, but there'll either be, you know, posts that will have a...
Clearly marked.
A clearly marked so that you can't jump line or anything like that. But we could also have, you know, probably six cars, four to five cars at least, in that area queued up. The car wash itself will be, you know, we could run a car every two and a half to four minutes. So, I don't think that there's going to be the stacking up, because that was one of my concerns, is if too many people started stacking up after this way. But I think that we can have enough of, well, and that's why we have the two gates as well, to help just move people through.
In response to your question, I just asked a question. Could, would it be possible to slide this gate a little bit this way to provide a little bit more stacking in this area here before the cars begin to turn the corner? Would that be of any help at all to provide a little bit more?
Yeah, or even just bumping in on the, before you get to the gate, bumping in the landscaping a little bit.
In this one?
Yeah, slightly to accommodate, you know, a couple more cars.
I think the turn, the radius from here over to there is almost maximized out to here. If we did move it down a little bit, I think you might gain, you know, maybe a car, it would be negligible. But that was, that was one thing that we, you know, went back and forth by the bit.
The other thing is you could get a car stuck halfway in the gate if it gets too close with the cars stacked up waiting to pull in.
Yeah, and you want to always have, at least, you always want to have a car buffer.
You try to pull your F-350 long bed ahead, but the cars haven't moved in yet, now you're halfway in between. If it gets too close to where they stack the cars, I could see.
But they're also, you know, automated or infrared.
But I agree with Derek, you know, in the past, I've seen cars backed all the way up to 44 waiting to get into the car wash.
Right.
So, I'm sure that's, you know, is concerned as well.
So, it's almost like a ski, when you're in a ski line, so you have people that just sort of go like this, but you're paying at the same time so that it's a lot more fluid.
It allows people to pay, two people to pay simultaneously.
Right, exactly, so then you can just move ahead more quickly.
And I think that the equipment that we're going to be utilizing is much more dated.
Right, right.
You know, more current, so...
Up to date, not dated.
Not dated. It's going to, what's there is dated.
Right, right.
It's going to flow cars a lot, a lot easier.
What about the building itself? Is it going to be improved at all from the outside?
We have it, the architects come up with just, at this point, just some elevation drives. And we're working with a graphic artist for some color schemes and just kind of an overall fresh approach. One thing that we do want to do, the windows especially look a little too commercial, and one thing that we want to do to kind of make it blend into the community a little bit more is have grills on the windows and that type of thing. Make it look more, less like a commercial building and more like a, you know, a residential type of a building. It will get a paint job, it'll have a fresh new look, and we'll give it some, you know, new landscaping, curb appeal as well. But, you know, the basics and what we're focusing on now is just being able to make sure that it flows well, it works well, you keep cars moving, and you're not getting people jammed up, creating more of a headache than necessary.
Are there any more questions?
I just want to be clear. So, at this point, you're just asking for the, what's shown on that first...
Correct.
Just talking about the flow of those, those curves.
And what are the other, in addition to that long-range plane which they submitted, that's not for consideration, was this, the arches over the vacuums, that's an opportunity as well, right, for this?
Well, that, to my understanding, you know, had already been, they had put in the foundations for the vacuums, which will all be off the tar. They're just a big arch, it's going to be a free vacuum system.
We have some photos here, folks, so we'll just look at them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Free vacuums?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And that canopy is just a nice, you know, it's an additional...
You're having free vacuums?
Free vacuums.
Well, I would go to that.
Yeah.
There's going to be a line of...
You might want to rethink that lining there.
Or maybe if you wash your car, then you get a free vacuum.
Well, they say free without, it's free.
It's, it's, this model was actually created by a German about five years ago, and he brought it to the United States. And it's more automated, it's much more efficient, it's not as labor-intensive, so you're not having, you know, a number of people just running around. And, you know, the vacuum is just a nice aspect. If you didn't want to have a full car cleaning, you can pull up, jump out, and somebody will, you know, run it through the car wash for you, wipe it down, vacuum out the car, you know, leave it before you wait it.
The vacuums are along the wall there?
The vacuums will be along, along here.
So, you pull in, you go to the vacuum, and then you back up to get into the queue?
Well, you could either, you could either do that, or you could do, clean your car first, and then drive around, and then vacuum. It would be up to you.
That creates a little bit of a traffic issue on your exit from your car wash.
Coming, coming through.
Yeah.
I think most people would vacuum first. I personally would do that, and that's kind of what we were thinking about for the design of it. And there could be some people that would come in and just vacuum the car out.
Right.
And then leave.
I think it's better than it was though, because previously it was right at the end, at the exit of the wash.
Right.
People were backing up, all the cars were coming out of the wash, and then going back around. It was a mess. It's a lot better laid out than it used to be.
We wanted this whole area free and clear, for people to be able to exit. If they got in line and said, oh, you know what, I can't make it, I need to get out of line.
Because I remember there was just three vacuums there right at the front, and people were trying to get in, and people were trying to get around, and it was a headache.
It's a sticker to get out of any of those places over there, especially if you want to go to Simsbury.
Hiram, my only question is, I don't remember seeing the canopy the first time around. I just remember there was a rail with the hoses. Is that something?
Right, and that was the basic. If there was a canopy, it's an additional, it was on all the brochures.
Does that have to go to design review board or anything? I mean, I don't remember a canopy. What's it going to look like? What color is it going to be?
Yeah, they're right here.
Yeah, I've got the, I got, but is it going to be blue?
Well, it is red, but it comes in, I think, five or four or five different colors. We haven't gotten that far yet.
Any approval would probably have to be subject to DRB review of those canopies, because the last time we saw it, it was just a...
A rail?
Yeah, I mean, this, this is a pretty detailed, you know, archway for the most part.
I don't know, what do you think, Hiram?
I don't know, when we have a color scheme for the overall wash and overall marketing...
I would rather have them look at it. That would be the only thing. I think everything else looks good.
If it's raining, you don't get wet if you're back on the...
But the building color, would that be something that would be...
Design review board.
Because we're, yeah, we're working with, I guess, a graphic artist to come up with something that's palatable and appealing.
They, they're actually good to work with. I think they have a lot of good ideas. Maybe the same colors as shingles on your roof, you know, if you have a...
Right, that's what we wanted.
If you have a tan roof, a tan cover, you're not... But I think if you put something that really was in your face, you know, neon blue or something, they wouldn't be happy.
Where, where, you said this was a, where did this originate from? You said Europe, you said?
It was a German, yeah, that came up with this, this type of express.
Oh, okay, great, thanks.
What's it going to cost to wash your car?
We will be probably 10 to 20% less than down the street in Avon.
And faster.
And faster.
Where's down the street in Avon?
Russell Speedway.
He's not like Walmart.
Oh, I don't know, I must not wash my car.
We're going to check out on the way home, we're going to check your car.
No, trust me, I don't.
I think you'll compete very well with that.
Well, I just think that the efficiency of this, and we'll also have at these kiosk stations an RFI reader, so if you're a membership, you have a member, you just drive up, it'll recognize you. Hi, how are you? Would you like your normal wash, or would you like to upgrade that?
That's amazing.
That's nice.
You press whatever button you want, and it'll be much more of a...
Like an EZ Pass.
It's just like an EZ Pass, same technology. You'll get a receipt at the kiosk, yeah.
Hiram, how would this review by the DRB affect his plans to get open?
Well, I would suggest that, these are, these are physical improvements. If the commission wanted to go ahead and do that, that's fine. I'd certainly be glad to work with them in the DRB and moving this work.
I was going to suggest, what, if, if we decide to approve it, I would certainly support it. Why don't we just have him go informally to the DRB, and so that he doesn't have to come back here? Let the DRB just comment on his color scheme. So, we'd be approving it, subject to the understanding you'll talk to him.
Though, he might have to come back, right?
I'm sorry.
He doesn't have to do what they said.
No, they're, it's advisory, so...
I know, I know.
It's not going to be any neon colors. It's going to be probably a blue and white color scheme, you know, maybe three colors that'll be in all marketing material or match the kiosk.
I mean, everything, everything else looks good to me. I can't speak for, but the canopy wasn't in it when it got, first got approved.
No, and that was the only, that was the only thing that had the...
I would just be more comfortable that DRB just has a quick look at it and gives you their suggestion, and then everybody's happy.
I'm not opposed to the canopy.
I like the canopy because...
Well, it'll keep the other sun...
A metal frame, you know, support system is probably where you're going to have to maybe improve.
And I don't want Amy in the sun when she's vacuuming there for free, so.
Very concerned about the color.
Are we prepared to take action on this thing?
We're in motion. I move we approve this application, is it 13 dash 20?
Yes.
Second?
I'll second it.
Followed a favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
And would you say with the understanding that he had agreed to go to the DRB?
Yes.
Right, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hate to say, it's only 7:30.
It's feeling good.
Yeah, okay, we have, what do we have left here? Discussion of solar panels.
Rich Switzke said he was going to be here at 7 o'clock, so let me just go.
He's talking hallway at 7.
He's running away.
They're talking about putting solar panels on top of the roof.
Well, there's two. There's one that are on the ground, and there's one on the roof. There's two proposals.
Central school.
The town garage has them on the roof.
Well, we talked about this before.
Junior high has them on the ground.
I don't think we had an issue with it. Yeah, we talked about it.
Electricity generating solar panels, not the water heating electricity.
Photo electric.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Hey, take care.
Thank you.
Take care. Look forward to seeing at the car wash.
Free, free vacuuming, I'll be there.
Free car wash for the zoning.
I'm sorry, but jeez, you know.
While we have two seconds, and Rich will be right here, just wanted to let you know, I did send out a bunch of emails about the two consultant studies that we have going. But this Thursday at 6:00 PM at Masonic Hall, the marketing consultant will be here. So, if you're interested in that and you're able to make that, that'd be great. I'd like to get as much input into that as possible.
What was the time again, Hiram?
6:00 PM.
What is it for?
I'm just coming back from a trip, so I'm not sure I can...
What is it for, Hiram?
It's the marketing study, the marketing consultant, that, we started this with EDC, and we need to have this wrapped up within a couple of months, so it's not going to be a huge, long study. But they're offering several suggestions in terms of the particular consultant out of it. I think they had 11 proposals actually. Initially, we interviewed three or four of them. So, the committee selected this one as one who had some good, really good ideas about how to put the town forward in a good light. And so, we're hopeful that they'll try to get as many businesses, Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, and so on, to come and attend as possible.
That's right.
So, hopefully we get a good turnout. The second one will be next Monday night, and that's also going to be at 6:00 PM. That's going to be at Eno, actually. Couldn't get the library. And that's a discussion of the village district that'll ultimately end up as some sort of a zoning regulation. The village district that we're looking at, originally we had wanted to do more, but because of the funding that we have, didn't really allow us to do a lot. So, the one that we're looking at is the Wheaton area, which is essentially from 185 up to Powder Forest Drive on both sides of the road there. So, that's what they're looking at. Hasn't had any, haven't had any decisions made in terms of what that's going to look like, or what, we have sent letters to every single property owner in the area, gotten a few people called, saying what's going on, what's it about, what they're interested.
Doesn't go down to the fire station?
I'm sorry?
Doesn't extend to the fire station?
Not that far down, Dave. We talked to the consultant initially and tried to stretch him as far as we could in terms of what we wanted to get out of it. And that was about as far as we could stretch him in terms of the length of the highway in that area.
That's an economic decision, not a lander decision.
It is, yeah, it is. There's an engineer, architect, planner, and some other, other backup staff that are involved in that. So, what we expect to get out of that is some fairly detailed regulations that'll come to this commission, also planning for determination as to whether it's a good regulation or not. So, not determined by any chance, stretch of the imagination, but if we do have an opportunity to come and take a look at what's going on that night, that'd be great, too.
Quickly, Hiram, is the marketing consultant part and parcel of our marketing towards anyone coming in for the Hartford building?
No, that's another separate one, so...
So, that, and that's not what was approved for additional funding by the Board of Selectmen?
Well, what the Board of Selectmen approved was that originally we had 30,000... Well, what the Board of Selectmen approved was that originally we had thirty thousand dollars that they were gonna give us.
Right.
And I knew that this was coming and so I asked for that amount of money, what they finally agreed to at their last budget meeting was, if we wanted to apply that to the Hartford study, we could go ahead and do that. Hartford's paying for the significant majority of that whole study.
Right, right.
And that's another one. Those RFQs will be back here on May twentieth.
Okay.
So probably a couple of days after that, we'll set the, um, the interview times for that too, and I'd like to get, uh, a good group of people together to, to interview those folks as well, so that'll be an exciting one actually, so we'll see what happens.
There, there will likely be some crossover?
There, yeah, there should definitely should be some crossover, certainly with the marketing people and, and this one, no question. The village district's a little bit separate.
Right.
But I think the marketing one will be very important, and, and they actually talked about that, the marketing people said, you know, once they found that this was going on, they're very interested in what, how that whole thing is gonna be proposed.
Okay.
Hartford is obviously, they, they're interviewing two real estate consultants and whoever's gonna get their, you know, their listing, I, I don't have a clue yet, but they selected two of them and they were ni- nice enough to invite us to sit in on those interviews, so.
Great.
So we'll see what happens with that.
What, what's the size of this, again, from the-
The village district is from one eighty-five, from Hartford Road up to Powder Forest Drive, that area.
Is it going back at all on one eighty-five to that-
Yep, well, exactly how far-
Two lane bridge, it's the biggest obstruction in town.
Well, I don't know how far back it's gonna go, and, well, that's a good question, we'll have to, we'll have to wait and, wait and see. That's a sensitive issue, I guess, from what I understand, either was discussed, uh-
Only for people that are driving down.
Into that, now, okay.
Ready for Mr. Switzky? He wants to come up.
Hi, good. Good evening, sir. I have one more. Uh, the reason I'm here tonight is to talk about photovoltaic solar units, and I appreciate you hearing me, because this is kind of this John Doe type proposal, but I thought it was quite important, because the exact approval and administrative process on new technologies, it's always been unknown, um, the reviews I'm gonna show you tonight, um, actually are not going forward for many reasons, but I thought they were good examples of, of what's out there. There's a lot of opportunities to do alternative energy right now, the state has some interesting programs, um, there's a number of private operators that will come in and install these units, maintain units and sell the power to the town with any residual power that might occur during certain seasons, going back into the regular electric grid for which we could get a credit. We also could own them ourselves, but for several reasons, uh, there's a lot of upfront costs involved, and ironically enough, one of the economic, uh, features of, of the programs is tax credits and so forth, which private taxpaying groups would benefit from and would not. As far as locations, uh, shown on this first one, are roof mounted type units, uh, which are fairly, uh, prevalent around here, you do see them from place to place, biggest one in town is out on, uh, Fleming Farm, uh, the Etna has some big units on their buildings in Hartford, and the other obvious alternative is ground mounted, you don't see those as much, although ironically enough, you see them up in Vermont. Some of the issues involved are, are the aesthetics, uh, be they rooftop or ground mount, you're obviously gonna see them, uh, there's not any particular way to disguise these things, they have to be oriented to the maximum sun, uh, solar gains, uh, there's certain buffering issues if they're ground mounted, that obviously you can't plant a bunch of trees near them because they're gonna shade your panels, there's some security issues, uh, especially on ground mounted, exactly how you're gonna keep it and playing around with them. So maintenance issues, short-term maintenance, one of the first one that comes up is winter maintenance, who takes the snow off? Uh, you get a lot of different reports about how that happens, some is, oh, well, if they get warm, it just falls off. That also can be an issue on a roof, which is designed for a fairly uniform snow load, you're gonna have these panels angled on the unit, uh, on the roof and then get strips of snow, uh, that are gonna occur in a blizzard, so that's an issue. Long-term maintenance, one of the most interesting one that occurs on roof units is what if you get this installation up there out of sync with roof replacement? They'll put all these units up there and five years later, hey, guess what, it's time for a new roof, who's gonna take those units off and put them back? Interested enough, a lot of the private companies are a little vague about that, but that can be considerable expense, uh, and also in terms of ground uses, if you put a big installation on the ground and then you need your property for other functions, uh, you know, what's gonna happen? Well, there's some kind of interesting questions that are out there, um, and again, as I mentioned, Ritter, just to get your thoughts on some of these things, the aesthetics, what you'd like to see, whether we even need a permit? These are rooftop units, um, they're specifically located at our, um, Public Works Campus out on Town Forest Road, we have very good orientation on some of our buildings, uh, for southern exposure. This area is well isolated, there's no homes around, so yeah, you're gonna see them if you drive by, but certainly, uh, they won't be visible for the general public going by the facility. Again, we matched up the, uh, generating power with the use in the building, it works quite well. Most of the programs do need a user, uh, Connecticut's, uh, present statutes on selling the power into the grid separate, uh, from a using facility is not well defined yet, but if you're at a facility that uses the power, it works pretty well.
Did, did you just lay them on the roofs of the existing buildings?
They are the, um, if a roof is oriented just right, and you've probably have seen this on residential homes, where they just lay them right on there, most of our buildings are gonna put them on a framework that orients those panels to the best advantage for the sun.
Is it more important to do it best example to the sun and to put them on there kinda screwy looking? Or, or is it better to just lay them on the roof and, and get ninety-four percent or ninety-nine percent?
Um, if, if you're gonna be that close on gain, yeah, you would probably lay them right on the roof.
The Fleming ones are flat with-
Those are right flat.
Yeah.
Yeah, and these actually, these would be flat, we have very excellent southeastern exposure at that facility. Actually, a lot of our buildings have very good exposure, this is, this is the Simsbury Farms on the ice rink, it has just about perfect exposure, those, and, and the roof angle is good. Probably, uh, these would be laid directly on, the ones at the highway department, interestingly, would probably, they look like they were flat, but they would be raised slightly, this is a steel pre-engineered building that has a pretty flat roof, as opposed to the ice rink that has a very steep roof.
Does it have a metal roof or?
They're metal roofs, and they're actually pretty easy to deal with, because you can put water-
So you're talking a forty, fifty year life on that roof anyway, right?
Yeah, yeah, so the metal roofs are a good bet. Uh, the biggest concern on the, the roof mounts have been on schools or other town buildings, uh, with different types of built-up roofs, membrane roofs where the life is maybe twenty years. Most of these photovoltaics have a life, an effective life of about twenty years, but a lot of people don't know about these units is they do lose a percentage of effectiveness every year. This is a school site with a ground mount setup, a fairly extensive field, these would have a fifteen percent angle to get the best tilt. There'd be seventy-nine racks with eighteen units each. Streets is out here, it would have very high visibility, uh, you can certainly do some low buffering, but obviously you can't put big trees in, and obviously, at least for that twenty-year period, you've pretty much used up a chunk of your property.
Is there a minimum square footage that is practical, save it for a house? And is, is there a formula, square foot per kilowatt hour or whatever?
If there is, and particular program actually that, as I mentioned, we're not proceeding with this, but in order to qualify under the programs, you do have to generate a certain amount of kilowatts per year, what you saw in these three examples were, uh, if you aggregated all the power together, it would be enough to qualify. And that was one of the reasons we didn't proceed, one of the sites we felt we weren't prepared to go forward with and therefore we didn't have enough generation.
So what happens to the power at different times? The, the highway department has these on the roof, it's producing power on Saturday, no one's there, or Sunday, no one's there?
That would go back into the grid and we'd get a credit.
Okay.
Yeah, basically, it spins the meter backwards and, and the docks.
So you get an instant credit then?
Yeah.
For the most part. You don't have to produce a certain amount of energy over the entire year in order to get the credit?
No.
Do these go into a battery and then the battery goes into an inverter?
These are direct, pretty much, uh, we're not storing, they go through, uh, rectifiers to get the stuff converted over to, you know, regular eastern power.
An inverter.
An inverter. Now, you do hear some units where they try to store it, but that gets pretty expensive, and if you're doing it on a commercial basis, you need to switch gear and equipment, but these are going through an inverter for direct use.
And you mentioned earlier, um, some of the programs that are available through the state and, uh, some of the financing that's available, um, and you were saying that, uh, you can get residential resources or loans or, um, financing, but not so much for the cities?
Yeah, the bigger, the bigger units qualify, and I cannot give you the precise details of each program.
Cause there are a couple even newer programs more recently that I think may address towns.
Yeah, these, these units are using what they call recs, and essentially you're getting recs.
Yeah, yeah, there's-
And I, I do not know the details of how those work exactly, but-
There's CREC and OREC.
There was an auction that basically-
Yeah, we were gonna participate in an auction, we just weren't prepared to go ahead at this point, and one of the big concerns was just to get your feeling on how these things look, you've seen them, you know what they look on the rooftop, um, not too much experience with they look like on the ground around here, there are some up in Vermont that I've seen.
Well, there's, we approved one from BUR.
Yeah, BUR has one and, yep.
Yeah.
I haven't enough-
But his is behind the building and he'll answer.
Yeah, it's well out, out of the most visuals.
I mean, this one here is Henry James, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I could see people driving by looking at the side yard and you'd see it all the time.
And, you know, and I mean, you finally reached the point with some of these items, you know, a photovoltaic panel is what it is, uh, wind turbine is what it is, you can't make believe it looks like something else, you can't say, oh, well, we painted it green, it looks like the field, well, no, not really, it looks like a bunch of solar panels, um, but there are obviously some decisions to be made, there's some, um, good environmental benefits.
This is the way that I think we will start saving big money over the time, and initially it won't-
I'm interested, and I couldn't say that, I'm gonna save it for the environment.
Well, it's both, actually.
Save non-renewables, um, right now, the energy market is very unusual because-
Yes, it is.
Uh, the gas prices are way down, um, but I think a lot of it has to do with the, you know, commitment to clean energy.
So there's no return without a subsidy?
Right now, unless some of these programs are done, no, there really isn't.
And with their life and their roof life, you'd almost have to do it at the same time you're doing a roof.
Just about, just about.
See, that's the problem with these things on the roof, you gotta, and if you have a roof problem, like you said, Rich, and it's not clear, you know, who's responsible for taking those things off, then your, your cost benefit is gone.
One of the big, uh, one of the big things we require, uh, if we were to go to a roof unit is, you gotta have a letter from our roofing company indicating that our warranty isn't gonna be messed up, because my experience with a lot of roof warranties is, boy, the slightest thing you do up there, guess what, warranties are-
You'll step on a roof.
Yeah, and I mean, I'll-
We did one at the high school, and, and a month later, the botany teacher went up and drove two-by-fours to the new, brand new roof.
Our new roofs, where you walk, have catwalks, you know, this building has catwalks on it, but there's a lot of issues, especially with the membrane roofs.
Is this something that we should maybe have another larger presentation on as far as what the options are for the town, um, because I know that the, um, state of Connecticut and, uh, through CLMP and others will, are willing to come out and do these types of presentations, and I think it's, it's possible that we should learn more because of what you're bringing up and I think what's available to us.
There actually are several companies that do this.
Yeah.
These were actually developed, the CES, which is right in Middletown, has a division that installs these, uh, there's a couple of other very large companies.
Right, but I think-
They would do a presentation.
But I also think that we should look at what the state offers, because we may be able to recover more, maybe money.
Well, right now, and the three examples I showed you here, it would not cost the town any money.
Yeah.
And because they're using that-
We should probably just explore all of the options.
What does that mean, wouldn't cost any money then? What do you?
We wouldn't have to pay for anything, it's be a private utility, basically, uh, a no-cost lease on the roof of our building, and then they would be selling us more economic power, they would maintain all the facilities.
They get the power though.
And it's a resale.
That's the way about Old Farm School, is they don't own it.
Yeah.
It's on their roof, they don't own it, they buy whatever the company's like to rate it and agree.
It's a long-term contract.
Twenty years.
They get cheaper power in return for having you on the roof.
Right, they get cheaper power, it all works.
Maybe.
That's the best.
Yeah, I mean, it's, again, we're always evaluating on the day you're evaluating.
But at some level, don't we have to be careful that we're not buying into equipment that'll be dated in twenty, in fif- in five years even? So I think we have to be careful about what it is we're thinking about as a town, making large, large investments.
It works.
Residential's different.
Well, you wouldn't be buying, cause the company owns it.
That is the advantage of the-
But they know to change it necessarily.
No, but they're putting it on your side, you're just being a customer to their production.
Yeah, I don't know all the details, but I think we should find out more, because this is a very interesting and important type of move, both environmentally, clean energy wise and saving money.
But it's, uh, they're gonna be gone.
What about the alternatives that are available? You know, these, if this gets beaten by some other alternative like geothermal, you might be the only guy having one of these spare parts or a problem.
Well, the, the positive sign of, of these proposals is that they're owned and installed and paid for by somebody else, so we wouldn't get stuck with a financial loss, but there is, there are obviously, in a time of evolving technology like this, there are some risks involved, and that's a good question.
Right.
You would do the best due diligence you can, evaluate it, but can you guarantee it?
Right, well, that's what I was sort of trying to allude to as well, Dave, I think we have to be looking at what the latest technology is, not just the one that, that the companies are selling right now, because they've got a glut, frankly, of solar panels, and they wanna get them moving, so.
Yeah, well.
Nomina.
But I think you brought up another good point, Rich, gas has become so cheap now that they're generating power, are they gonna be competitive against this?
Well, I don't know, solar's pretty good, it's just that you have to figure out what kind of mechanism you're using to generate it.
And you're relying on state funding and that's an unknown, uh, your, your basis for-
Well, this, this type of thing, once those credits are issued.
Right, yeah, they're good.
And we're no good for lighting.
They're no good.
They don't work in the dark.
They don't work in the dark.
You know, there's some, it's a very interesting business. We actually use a good deal of green power, we buy most of our power, well, not most of it, we buy all of our power from Trans Nanova, which is nearly all hydro. But that's a controversial issue right now, too, and, but there are some facts of the matter, is that when the goals of the state, 20% and greater clean energy, you just brought a good point, you know, the wind doesn't always blow, and the sun doesn't always shine, so tell me where that energy's coming from.
The power company.
And that's where hydro could back us, because it's hydropower, but it's, you know, it's all in the country.
Well, they passed a law in 2010, 80% of the residential housing was going to be made energy-efficient by 2030. That's, that was passed in 2010. So what's happening now is there's a lot of programs that are rolling out through the state, incentivizing both communities, towns, municipalities, and residential customers to really try to figure out how you're going to get there. So there's a lot, I agree with you, there's a ton of opportunities right now, and we should be smart about which ones are going to work best for us.
But anyway, I wanted to get kind of your early thoughts, and something for you to think about in terms of how these, I mean, namely, our frontline decision-making here, it has a lot to do with aesthetics, how they look, so something to think about.
Thank you very much. We'll probably have you come back next year this time.
No, we'll put up there, all right?
Yeah, can we do any kind of, like, educational forums on this type of thing? That'd be great.
That's something we can set up. I will tell you, just as a way of background, this town has done a lot of stuff, but it's kind of in the background, not real jazzy stuff that everybody talks about, but we've done a lot of, you know, boring stuff, like these are the most efficient fixtures available. We've got automated heat controls, some of which don't always work, but our biggest thing, which nobody knows about, is, unless you're in the business, is variable frequency drive pumps. We run some big pumps, and even in this building for heating, and the schools, our sewer plant, ice skating rink, to the extent that over the last 10 years, we've gotten about $400,000 of cash rebates from CLMP on their energy savings.
They want to give it back to you.
So that, that stuff is, you know, real unknown. It's down buried in the basement somewhere, there's no, because it has no visibility, but we, the light changeouts we did in the back alone saved about 20% power just in that area, the light fixtures out in the park, and let's say about...
So why aren't we talking about that as a town?
Well, you know, it's the type of thing where it gets a lot of PR when you're doing it.
Yeah.
But people don't bring it up a lot, but actually, that energy rebate program was kind of interesting, because there was an article about West Hartford, and West Hartford is very good at PR, if you're not listening, but I got a little curious about, wow, West Hartford, they have all these buildings, they can do this, but I just sat down and added up all that.
I was wondering.
Guess what? We've got more rebates than they do.
They?
So we've done a lot of things quietly.
That's great.
And the big savings were obviously in the big schools, the high school, the sewer treatment plant, and, so anyway, we're certainly doing everything we can, and this is kind of a new direction. You should know that we did a lot of investigation on wind turbines, and of course, they're evolving too, but wind turbines are an interesting technology, and even though you think the wind blows a lot, when you do, or blows hard, well, you remember that day when it was really blowing, but what you want is something like out in the Great Plains, where that wind just kind of blows gently all the time, and it doesn't do that here often. And you see a lot of turbines sitting around that aren't turning all the time, so...
And they went to rural electrification, they had parties chopping down those old turbines, because everybody hated them.
Yeah, but we have not pursued that. We looked into it very carefully on two of our schools, we did a big study at Simsbury Farms, and we just don't have enough sustain with the current technology.
If Joe Smith comes in and wants to build a house and put solar panels on it, do we have any zoning restrictions on that?
If they meet the height requirements, and they get all their building permits, of course, there's nothing else that they need to do at this time. The area where it becomes tricky, and we had one this week, actually, is in the center of town, we have code now, obviously, and we asked them to put it in the rear of their property to the extent possible and so on, and it actually turned out that the building they're putting it on worked out really well, but I'd be surprised if you could even see it. But right now, there's no, there's no reason for the commission to be involved, it doesn't exceed height regulations, there's no variances involved.
So would only be, would a commercial building would have to go design review, and they would say whether it's pretty or not?
I'm not so sure. I mean, I would think it depends on what, whether you want to send it there or not, you know? I mean, if it's going to lay on the roof like that, I'm not sure what more you could do with it.
Right now, from, from our government operations side, where my Public Works at, we're looking at putting them on the roof of the building department, putting them on the ground with a site plan amendment for you folks.
Do you go underground their structures? You know, if they're on the roof, then it's just part of...
I'm just, I mean, you know, I'm just concerned about neighbors, and what their feeling is going to be on having these, you know, we're going to keep, have to keep them out of the setbacks, I would imagine.
Yeah, we're very aware of that.
A highly treeed town.
Yeah. And that's, that's a question, you know, I mean, clearly, out of all the things that are available, whether it's groundwater heat pumps, or whatever it happens to be, or wind, or whatever, clearly, there's the shortest payback theory for the least amount of money right now is solar, but, you know, Dave brings up a good question, what happens five or 10 years from now, so we'll just have to see. But I think, as Rich pointed out, you know, in the Henry James example, for example, that's, that's a different animal, because it's on the ground, it's, it's near the neighbors and so on, so that will probably be treated a little differently than, than these guys here would be, if that'd be my recommendation.
And they, they would have to face the ball fields, right? That's south of Henry James?
Pretty close to south end.
Yeah, they would be kind of southeast.
And isn't there a, a tree line between them and the softball fields?
No, these are, as depicted on this plan, these are right up front, the spire town road out here, so we've got a kind of a southeastern way.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking of a different school.
Yeah.
Rich, rather than solar power, just before we close, what about hot water generation? You know, to supplement the heating system, rather than trying to generate electricity?
We have taken a look at that, we do have that up at Simsbury Farms, with the kind of dual domestic hot water, using just...
We had talked about it, you know, heating the pools with it, so the pools are more tempted.
Yeah, for our municipal operations, recreation complexes are the best place, because we, quite honestly, a building like this, we hardly use any water. Even most of the schools, they don't use much water.
You know, but what I was thinking is, can you supplement...
But you've got showers.
Can you supplement the baseboard heating with it?
Oh, that's, that's...
Wouldn't it help the furnace? You don't have to say, wouldn't it help the furnace that has to boil the water if it's getting hot water already, and it's only got to bring it up 10 degrees?
Yeah, we have not done that yet, but that, that might be an interesting... We've looked at the, actually, what Simsbury Farms is doing is they're supplementing the domestic side.
Yeah.
Again, the, I don't know the economics of that, on the, on the face of it, the economics are more difficult, because you're highest solar gains during the summer when I'm not heating the building.
Yeah.
But for a recreation facility, in fact, it is using a lot of hot water during the summer, it's a good bet.
Yeah.
And that's what we're trying to find.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other issues, Dave?
Hope you can come to one, or to the, we can make it something great, other than that, thanks very much.
Thank you.
See if he has an option for us.
Hi, move we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Was in there something I needed?